Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Three P M. Let's get started. We have Marquette Township Board here to talk about our twenty twenty-three budget. We're doing public works today. I've got my little cheat sheet here. Roll call, Randy?
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Winslow.
Present.
Trustee Everson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Repetitor is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff President, this manager, Kengas, Superintendent Public Works, Lenny Vodinas, and Assistant Clerk Accountant, Kim Clark. Yeah.
And I didn't say the date. Today's Monday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and we just called to order three P M. We don't have any public. So today we've got, see, I hold the enterprise funds, water, sewer, solid waste, and then if we have more time, we can talk about the general fund again. First one in my book, Lenny, is stormwater.
Okay.
Want to start with that one. We'll go in order.
Sure.
Excellent narratives, by the way.
Thank you.
Very easy to follow. Changes, but I do have some questions.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Everybody on stormwater? Okay. Let's see. I'm curious about, thank you. The state grants, the ninety-three thousand in this year's budget. You know, I don't really remember that. Was that?
Backyard Creek.
For the, that's what I was gonna say. Is that for that? Okay.
For what?
Backyard Creek. I didn't know we got the money already.
That's the non-point source grant that we got from the state. The road commission directed the majority of the match on that, although there will be more to come on that regarding engineering fees.
So then I'm wondering about the interest. We're not gonna get five hundred dollars worth of interest. Does that make a difference or?
It's money in, money out, really. And I guess I can let Lenny speak on this one, but I can tell you from when I did this budget a couple of years ago. The primary reason why we have a stormwater fund is to have a place to log revenues from development projects. Whenever they have stormwater as part of their development, they have to pay their fees, so we have to register that somewhere, track it separately from the general fund. We assess our engineering review costs and legal review costs against those escrow funds, and whatever's left at the end gets returned to them. So that's really the only reason why we have a stormwater fund. It's because of development and our stormwater ordinance.
Is that same with the, with the permits too? It's in and out?
Yes.
Now, the revenue side, for every stormwater permit that occurs, we have a five hundred dollar administrative fee that we keep. So that keeps building the fund balance, which we're probably gonna have to dig into here in a bit with this backyard creek engineering stuff, but that's a separate issue for another day.
Anything, Lenny, you want to tell us about it? I mean, it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, this one is pretty much a simple one.
Any questions from the board?
I think he wishes they were all this simple.
I do.
Goodness, goodness per senses.
Yeah.
Okay, and we can move on to wastewater. That's the next tab.
This one gets a little bit complicated.
Yeah. Okay. I think makes sense to me. The one question I had, just going through all of your accounts is where are we with generators now? Are they, are all of them in and working?
So we're still the Center Street generator, the bid awards actually be on the board agenda tomorrow for that, but we did, you know, get bids and we did select a little bidder, and then it's gonna go before the board. So we're hoping once that's approved that they can start ordering the material and the generator, and we're probably still looking at like next spring for that one to actually be completed.
And that's the last one, right? We've got, the rest of them are?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
On the wastewater side?
On the wastewater side.
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I'm looking at your sales and that. It looks like it's almost status quo and that from.
Yeah, so.
You're estimating through, through June, fifty-one, five thousand, five hundred thousand thirty-one. So you're doubling that. So you're kind of status quo. To me, the wastewater and then going back to the, then I've jumped forward to the water. When you look at the revenue on the water, on sales, and that's increasing. So my thought is if the water is increasing, your wastewater should also be increasing by a percent.
Not all the townships on wastewater are on the sewer system either. So there are some areas that do have water and not sewer. So there would be a little bit discrepancy in that. And this is kind of still, we're kind of still, the water's still kind of sloshing back and forth in the pool here from COVID here to with like sales, and we're working to kind of steady out here. So it's kind of what it has been doing in last year, it's been kind of hopefully steadying out here, hoping we can get more accurate number. Because actually, it looks like in twenty twenty-one, it must've been everybody staying at home, everything, you know, we were anticipating everything really dropping, but actually some of the usage and everything went up. So a lot of that's people probably staying home. And, but now it looks like we're gonna kind of get to more normal.
Leveling out now, you hope?
Yeah, yeah.
Just in time for system growth.
That's, that's another story.
It is. But I don't think Lenny included that in here from a sales perspective, because we don't know when that's gonna happen.
Well, you have to see what the sales are before you do any projection too and that.
So we're still kind of thinking, we're not even anticipating that right now for sales. We're just kind of trying to, we kind of have a good feeling on it, just because who knows what's gonna happen in the future.
The next thing I have is on interest and that. You're, you're, you're looking at interest over seventy-seven hundred dollars and that.
So some of that, I just kind of went with the three-year average on it.
And can you explain what other revenue is?
The other revenue, oh. I want to maybe a little help from Kim, if she knows what that one was.
Lois wouldn't know if she were here.
Yes.
Because I'm looking at going backwards in twenty twenty, it was up to eighty-five hundred, but then we're running.
Does it have?
Three thousand somewhere in that.
Does it have something to do with putting sewer lines in where they weren't and people paying for that?
That would probably, that would be more like in the connection permits and even.
But not, not the connection permit, the permit going in front of people's houses.
I'm not sure. I have to double check on that. It could actually even be where if we do work for somebody, we're billing them and getting the money back.
Yeah, putting in their sewer lines.
Yeah, stuff like that. But we can definitely double check on that and get back.
Yeah, and as people sell their houses and have to put in sewer, there would be an increase in fees, that fee field, getting money. We don't have any what?
Other revenue this year.
Nobody had to put in sewer line yet, or they hired someone locally.
Some deposits, customers.
I think we should take a look at what the actual historical journal entries have been under that line. It's clear that there's been consistently something there, but it's not a significant enough portion of the budget to lose too much sleep over, as long as we don't over anticipate revenues, would be my opinion.
That's fine. It's just that it kind of jumped out at me as to what it would be. Now even, now, I'll go down to expenditures, down under, what is it, lies or contracted services. You have a big number in there, and I don't know why you had fifty thousand in there last year.
So some of that actually was probably for the Center Street lift stations, so kind of, you know, get the engineering and stuff on it, like that kind of project.
Okay.
So that will end up, I had that circled too. We'll end up with a little excess there in the budget then if we don't end up doing anything more than the forty-six hundred this year.
Right.
So I did have, so yeah, that, some of that is from, you know, the Center Streets project. I did have, we do, we do have upcoming a sewer study that we, that we're gonna be doing. So I did leave a little bit in there above, like from like twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty.
I think the next one I have is on fees. You're talking through June, forty-six hundred, so you're talking ten thousand, you're jumping up to eighteen thousand in that. You anticipate something else happening?
Let's see here.
It's been up and down. You go back in history, it goes up and down. I don't know what they're really looking at.
So what account number are you on, Ernie?
Eight thirty under expenditures.
Eight thirty under expenditures.
Administration.
Fees.
Five-five-eight is the cost center.
Yep.
Five-five-eight, thank you.
So I did go, I did like a three-year average, plus I put five percent in there for like an inflation rate. That could be, you know, a lot of, you know, different fee-based type items for different things.
So do you think we have more fees to pay between June and December?
Certainly. Sometimes they only happen late in the year.
So like, even with.
So we don't know yet.
Even with like the meter reading that, because it's going between water and sewer, that gets billed one time a year.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I always double the six-month one, right, to come up with a figure.
And sometimes, sometimes I'll do that double the six-month thing, and then sometimes it's like, okay, this is a.
One-time fee.
One-time deal that might not hit until after June. It might, might actually get the bill in July.
Yep, okay, I got it. So we'll see that on the end of the year?
Yes.
Statement that shows us how much money has been spent totally.
Total for the year.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
And then like some of the things are, you're right, they go like six-month thing, but even then you gotta kind of project it, because we know, you know, like let's say with gas or electricity, we know we're going all the whole year, but sometimes the bills are higher in the wintertime than they are in the summertime for the gas.
I understand that, but just for a quick look, I always double, see where I'm at.
And that's what I do too, but then sometimes you gotta kind of, like we were just talking, you have to go back and see what's gonna be.
Yeah, the historical value from previous years is a better indicator.
It might hit in the second half of the year.
Okay, I got it.
So my question would be is, so what's the bottom line that residents want to know? Is there rate going up or not?
For this year, we are not projecting any rate increases. That's not to say that's gonna be, happen, you know, in future years.
So this budget year, no rate increase for wastewater.
And that was that recommendation of that person who came here. That was the water. Okay, about we had talked about, okay.
See, we are, I did see, we are getting an increase in the unit rate from the plant.
Correct, yes.
So that might transcribe the increased rates maybe in the future a little bit, but.
Depending on how much money is in the.
Well, it's a six thousand dollar change, so that's not a heck of a lot.
Yeah, it's thirty-six cents in a gallon. Is that?
Per thousand, yeah.
A lot?
Per thousand gallons.
Is that a big increase?
It's a pretty good rate or a percentage increase, but that's due to things going up at the wastewater plants. So I know their chemical costs have really risen, the natural gas or electricity, so it's kind of basically just everything's going up in relation, and we have to.
So we need to watch it for this year and see what happens for next year.
Yes. So for this year, we're looking good. I mean, I do have, I did put some bigger increases in for the expenditures for like the interceptor cleaning. And, you know, for like natural gas, I just kind of tried to estimate pretty high, because we don't know where that's gonna go. So especially natural gas is kind of a big one. Who knows where that's gonna go? I know I read some reports where they said Wisconsin was looking at seventeen to twenty percent projecting increases this year. So I kind of just kind of tried to overestimate on that, just because that's, that type of stuff is really up in the air. I mean, they're saying, you know, five percent increase inflation on a lot of things. We know that in reality, it's probably a lot higher.
Well, that'll keep the residents happy, knowing at least that part of their bill won't be increasing.
Okay.
So on your lift stations, on the narrative part, five eighty-two, you're talking about a change. It says twenty twenty-two generator project being removed. You're just saying because it's gonna be done, right?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Although we're gonna see work carryover to twenty twenty-three on that. So if we don't spend it this year, we'll spend it next year.
What else?
I have no other questions on this.
I have a question on the grinder pumps. Are we purchasing them ahead of time now?
Yes, yeah. So what we'll do is we'll try to kind of anticipate what we're gonna need, and we're trying to, I think right now we're out maybe four or five months on some of these, so we'll place an order now, and we might be lucky if we see them in like five months.
About parts, Lenny?
Pretty much the same thing even with the parts, yeah. And then what we're also trying to do is, and I think we've talked about this before, if we get a really old pump that's costing too much time and material put in it, we'll just try to, if we have a new pump, we'll just try to.
Retire.
That's a smart thing to do.
That way somebody doesn't get two pump replacements in a month.
Yeah, right. Would that be, right?
So under capital improvements, do we talk about his requests now or, yes? Yes? No?
Doesn't matter.
Just make sure it's specific to that account.
It is. It is, right? Lenny, you have some capital purchase?
Yes, yeah.
Requests for capital improvement program?
For wastewater.
Right.
Or wastewater.
So you're talking like the lift station upgrades?
Turn up with us, though. It's into the packet.
In the board packet.
Oh, how much money is in that account for capital improvements for wastewater?
I don't.
Well, we have replacement and improvement line items annually in the budget.
These both look like replacement. One's a replacement improvement.
Okay, replacement improvements, the managers recommend an eighty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars in replacement for wastewater.
So were you talking about the lift station upgrades that we had on that one? So basically, that project was one of the ones that we applied for the Eagle Grants for, and obviously we're way down on the list, so we might as well not even, never know. But we're gonna be resubmitting for next year too, so we'll see where that goes. But yeah, we, we pretty much had that project put there just because we were trying to get a grant for it.
It has to be done. We're trying to get outside funding mechanisms to assist us so that it doesn't impact the rate payers.
Right.
So we don't have to do anything with it this year?
We can't.
No, we, yeah, we're not gonna do it.
All right, so it's on, it'll be moved to next year?
Yes.
And your truck one?
So the truck one, yeah, we're hoping to try to replace trucks, try to do one a year to keep up, and so we don't have a, a truck that's costing us three or four thousand dollars a year in, in approve or repairs or so.
Or buying two trucks like you had two last year.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, so you'll, you'll put them over, put so much every year into it and buy a new truck every six years, every seven years, whatever.
Well, we'll try to do, we'll try to modernize our fleet now, so we'll try to, you know, start doing it. But it's also fifty percent water, fifty percent wastewater as well.
Okay, all right.
And just try to keep up on that so we don't.
I think that's a good plan. I think people, people should do that.
Well, yeah, because we normally, otherwise we're like, we're gonna get in that situation where we got a bunch of old cars and.
Yeah.
Or they cost a lot of money.
Okay, so it's only a three thousand five hundred and seventy-one allocation for this year, according to this? I'd be wrong.
Right. Well, we would have to try to, you know, get it and try to keep on the schedule.
There's money in the reserves allocated to vehicles already that we've been saving up for years on.
And how much money is there?
I don't have that number. We have it in a spreadsheet somewhere.
Because that's kind, in my mind, that's really important to know. But we can just keep going. But I, I think it's important to know how much money is put aside today for certain allocations already approved. Otherwise, how do you know how much money you have to, can I really buy a dishwasher if I don't have any money?
So this spreadsheet that's in the board packet, we did it for one item this year, because that was the only one we kind of did the checkbook savings account registry on, and that was for the police vehicle. We know we have fifty-two thousand one hundred and three dollars set aside, right?
Yeah.
The rest of these, water and sewer, we have the information. It's just not going to be as specific, because it's not specific to one piece of equipment. Public Works has a fleet of vehicles, right? So to, to say that there's X dollars in the reserve for equipment of which Y dollars is reserved for our next pickup truck, we probably don't have yet, because we've never done that before.
So it's a new process.
It's new as of, well, we solidified it for this item this year for the first time.
All right.
We definitely need to get better at it, because I know that's been the objective of many of you as long as I've been here, probably longer. So.
Yeah, and it's.
That first column in the spreadsheet needs to be filled out moving forward.
Because it's much easier to explain to the public.
Oh, absolutely.
Why do you have all this money and you, what are you doing with it? People ask me that all the time.
I have one simple answer to that. Asset management. We've been doing it. We just haven't been documenting it as well as we need to.
Okay, all right, so.
Every person does the same thing, I believe, you know, in, for a household.
Right.
And it's the same thing with this.
Oh, no, I, I think people.
We have more remarks about rusty old trucks and that, and we try to, here we are, making sure the highway's nice and clean, and then all of a sudden you see a truck coming, half of the fender's all rusted and stuff like that, and.
That's Lenny's truck?
That's only right, yeah.
No, but I mean, there've been several of them all over.
Right. And that's what we're trying to, we're trying to avoid getting to that point where we really have a rust bucket and one that we're really trying to put a lot of money in. So, I mean, just within the last couple of years, we're really trying to figure out a way to try to start doing that processing, keeping your better, better vehicles here.
How many do you have in the total fleet?
Ooh, I think eight, nine. I can't remember offhand.
Does that include building and grounds?
It might include building and ground. Well, let's see, we have three building and grounds. We have, we have more, probably more than that. I have to go into account, otherwise I'll have to make a mental note here, probably we have. But they all do have specific purposes. So we have one where we have a, a tank in the back for if we have to pump a grinder or pump. We do have the dump truck building and grounds. We have other trucks, the service truck where we carry all of our tools and the cranes, have another couple of bigger trucks that we know we can total gen- generate with. So they all have specific uses for specific projects that we have.
So you would just have an Excel spreadsheet with the name of each vehicle, the year it was purchased, what it's used for, when the planned replacement is.
Yes, and we can do that.
That, that would be like so simple to push that button on the computer, and we could all see it and not ask it, because we know.
Save the time and put it together, that's all.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
I can get it to you.
It's probably there somewhere.
Can you have it by Wednesday?
Why we won't be here.
I think, actually, I think it is already, it's already written down.
It's already done.
Probably would need, you know, the projected.
Replacement date.
Need to be up to you.
And it might not have the specifics, what it's used for, what it's, but we, we can.
You can put that in comments. Easy, easy peasy, right?
Absolutely.
Right, Kim? Yeah. Okay, then I can show it to those people saying to me.
Yeah.
I, I hope everyone understands that we're willing to give you whatever information you want. We just need to know what you want.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's always been the case. We're willing to.
It is now.
And it doesn't happen overnight. So just give us the time to put it together, and we'll get it to you.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, moving down to depreciation. Talking about two hundred and sixteen thousand versus one hundred and sixty-eight last year. Now, you're looking at the age of our system, really, and for replacement and that, what the depreciation is on that, so.
That all comes right from Kim's calculations in the software. And it's done at the end of the year.
Yeah. And I know the one I had, the spreadsheet I had was one hundred and sixty-eight thousand. The new one says two hundred and sixteen thousand, because that's the question I had right away is one sixteen.
There's two different lines of depreciation. The sewer system is one sixty-eight. The total is two sixteen.
Understand that. So, okay. I'll have to relook at that. But the depreciation for the sewer system didn't change, and to me, it probably should change, because over time you're depreciating that system by X number of percent in that. And you could do the same thing with the general too, so that we know what the cost is going to be when we redo it in that too, because that comes up.
So does it come out at the end of the year, you said?
Biannually is what it looks like. Half of it was taken out in the first half. Half of it'll be taken out before the close of books.
You're gonna do a monthly entry for depreciation?
No.
So we don't know what it'll be for twenty-three then?
And that's kind of one of those where I just took the eighty-four.
If you look at the statistical numbers, it's, it's pretty close.
But that's looking at one sixty-eight. It was one sixty-seven, and one seventy-one, and one sixty-seven. So it's following that line and looking at percent of depreciation for a, whatever it is, it should change by X percent each year as they go over in that. The depreciation, that's going down in that, so somehow, I don't know what the percent would be or anything else in that, so.
But you'll have it in January.
Okay, we'll have the new figure in January.
Lois said I already had those almost calculated by the time that I had started, and it's just a continuous monthly.
Okay, that's fine. It just didn't, look, it just didn't make sense to me in that.
So I have one more question. So nine-nine-nine-point-one-zero-one, transfer to general fund, ten thousand dollars. It looks like it's consistently, what are we transferring out of this budget wastewater fund to the general fund?
You'll see, my recommendation is zero.
Yeah, I see that.
And that's what it should be. We talked about this at our last work session, because I put zero in the revenue section for the general fund as well. I'm not exactly sure what that ten thousand dollars was for, but I'm assuming it's for administrative costs associated with the wastewater fund. But you'll recall, if we have direct transfers from enterprise funds to the general fund, rural development will not talk to us about funding any projects.
So we're getting. So it's going.
It needs to go away.
Okay, all right, perfect.
And I know this because I've been down this road before. We're in the city of Ishpamay. They had significant transfers from both water and wastewater to the general fund, and it was intended to offset overhead costs.
If you bill it, that's a different story.
Correct. That's why I think we need to look closer at how everyone's time is allocated that touches all of these accounts.
And you do a monthly billing, take care of everyone.
That would be Kim, Andrea, anyone that doesn't have their time specifically allocated to one cost center.
The percentage time spent, so.
Okay, what else?
All I have.
Let's move on.
Water.
So again, the bottom line, I, my question would be on the water fund. Is there any expend, any expected increases in rate structures?
As of this year, no.
That's one of the sheets, Kim, that we didn't get is the fees. I thought it would have been three different times, didn't it?
They were in that stack she handed out, I'm pretty sure. Oh, the fee schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't update it.
That's gonna be at the beginning.
Right now, we have nothing to update.
So it's not gonna change?
I think changes the garbage.
Yeah, garbage does.
We'll see.
Yeah, maybe not. Oh, the fee, the.
Anything.
Is that fee schedule?
On the list, yeah.
I didn't put that one in there because I wasn't sure.
Okay.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
There are certain things in the fee schedule that we probably should discuss, though. The part-time rate on solid waste in particular.
Yes, yeah.
We can get to that when we get to solid waste.
Okay, so water.
So no rate increases for this year?
No.
So let's start with the revenues. What are you basing the increase on? Just guess on the projects coming up?
So we had, for the revenues, we had an AP grants. We did have a grant last year, so that is, that's where in the grant that went to, you know, the revenues actually kind of went down from that. I also did take some of the, kind of maybe anticipating some of the growth, building and stuff, just because of the economy. I, I don't, you know, who knows where that's gonna go. So I kind of brought that back down for some of the three-year averages we're at, anticipating a slowdown. For the sales, it looks like last year we were very conservative on our sales, looking at what the sales are gonna be this year, kind of looking at the projections and kind of like with the six-month, it looks like we're kind of going back up from where we anticipated in twenty twenty-two. So that's where I did get that, those numbers from. The biggest change that you will see in what you have and what we are also. The biggest change that you will see in what you have and what we are also, uh, asking for is, the fire department did come to us and, and asked about the public, uh, fire protection charge, um, temporarily to waive that. And I believe on the one that you have, it's still showing twenty thousand on that, but we're, our department is okay with that.
You're gonna waive it for this year, so they can help for them with the.
Does the board have to waive that?
Well, when we pass the budget.
It'll be there.
It'll be, it won't be in there, so.
Okay.
So that would probably, you know, just those few things and then, uh, the biggest, of course, it would be with the fire department, but, um, that's where the changes in the revenues come from. So again, it's just kind of, everything's kind of, kind of evening out here with, uh, with the sales. And then what we anticipate could maybe is some building and stuff slowing down with the connection, uh, fees and the permits.
I'm looking at the revenue total, you got a million five ninety-two, four sixty-one. Now, if we drop that twenty thousand, you can drop that down to a million five seventy-two then, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And even by doing that, we're still okay on the, the other end, but we're just twenty thousand dollars left later.
Now, expenditures on contractual services, eight, eight oh one. We only got fourteen thousand eight hundred.
So we did have, uh, this year for twenty-twenty-two, the amended budget, we did have the water capacity study and then, uh, water valuation study. Um, those should be completed on this year, so that's some of the big changes that you're seeing into twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, we should get those this month, they said, right?
Yeah, hopefully by the end of this month. Maybe into the first of November, here's the data.
Have you budgeted for your asset management for the water side, Benny, Lenny? I know you, I know wastewater, you got that grant for, but water, we're kind of struggling to get that done ourselves.
Right, yeah, that's something we're, that we do still have to, to work on here.
It's not in the budget as presented.
But we're gonna have to have that sooner than later, so.
One thing is really good, we have a lot, all, not all, but a lot of the hard data, so a lot of the really heavy lifting is done. Uh, you know, everything has been, a lot of the stuff's been GPS, uh, identify and all that kind of stuff. Now it's just kind of putting into format where we can actually use it, so, which is good, so we do have a lot of the field work is done.
Well, I would, I would just recommend that you get that done next year, cause the Eagle's gonna require that anyway.
Right.
So.
Well, we do have an approved asset management plan on file, it's just not to the standard that I would be comfortable with, and I'll, I'll tell you why, it's because I did it in two months after I got here. The data part was done, putting the plan together was a scramble. So, I think Lenny knows we, we need to get it done. What we'll need to do is figure out what that cost would be to finalize a good plan.
Right.
And it's updated on file.
I know U P E A has that software they created that.
Yes, yeah.
We could probably get a price from them pretty quick or talk to Stan Tech to do the same thing on the water side.
Right, absolutely.
So is it data input that you've got left to do, is that what you mean?
Uh, pretty, yeah, putting every, all our data together.
The analysis of the data.
Okay.
So, I mean, so even now, we're still getting, gathering data with this lead service line, uh, survey that we're doing. So, I mean, we're, we're constantly out there getting data points and stuff and we are, we're putting it to format then when we're ready to put it all together, we can easily, or probably somebody else actually easily put it all together.
That's what I was wondering, if it's, that's like an Eric thing or?
That might be more of like, uh, U P E A or Stan Tech type of thing to do that. But we, at least we have a lot of the data that we can just give it to them, now we have it done.
Yeah.
A lot of places, they have to go out for years and years and years and go refine curb boxes and service lines and stuff like that, where we've been working on that over the last few years.
The reason I would like to get it done or get it up to where it should be is because that will help you budget moving forward in your assets.
It will also justify the money we have held in reserves. Why do you need all this money?
Right.
This plan says we need more. And who wants to ever tell anyone we need more money, right? But if we're keeping the rates flat and funding our asset management plan, we're doing pretty good. We just know that's not gonna last forever.
Right.
And I would rather write, raise it a little bit at a time than to be a huge amount and then your room will be full.
Right.
Lenny and I have had that exact same conversation internally.
Yep.
We don't want to say oops and then come, have, have to come back with even a five percent increase if we can do it in smaller increments.
Right.
And it's never going to decrease where you're at.
No, uh, no, no matter what, even inflation's gonna keep moving forward all the time here.
Yeah, the government's trying that with Medicaid, Medicare this year, we'll see.
Uh, I have a note for water pumping station at Northwoods.
What number is that?
I'm looking at the narrative. Five sixty-nine.
Oh, okay.
Thirteen hundred dollar change, not that it's a lot, a lot.
So this past year, or the year before, we actually had, Northwoods tank was repainted, so this last year in, uh, twenty-twenty-two was the warranty inspection for it, so that's where that, that's what that was.
So we didn't use more, cause it's, it says more maintenance cost if station is used more.
Well, was this the reservoir or the pumping station, I think I had.
The pumping station.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, so with the pumping station, what I did is I just anticipate if we have to use that station for pumping, for whatever reason, um, electricity cost is gonna be higher there.
No specific reason, then I didn't know if you had something in the works.
But for the reservoir itself, the difference on that one was just we had the warranty inspection in twenty-twenty-two, we're not gonna have it in twenty-twenty-three.
So, so the question I have, Lenny, on the Cox water pumping station, I know that needs to be upgraded, but are you looking at upgrading that possibly in the future if we do move in the direction we want to move with the city?
That's actually one, on the C I P list, that's one of our projects on there. Um, so that would be for, one of the ones that we had to actually, we filed for the S R F funding.
Okay.
Now hopefully we're gonna refile for it, hopefully get a little higher up on the list.
And it looks like, you know, we're, we're planning to allocate ninety-five thousand dollars a year for that, for so many years. Will that start in two thousand twenty-three as indicated?
Well, we're actually hoping that we're gonna reapply for the S R F funding, so we're hoping that we're gonna get that.
But it's always good to have a backup.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so it doesn't really look like there's any C I P stuff for public works this year, except some truck money.
Vehicles and stuff like that, yes.
And that's really a small amount of money.
Yeah. So, yeah, the big, the big ones are for the, the lift station upgrades and the pumping station upgrade and, um, we're hoping that we get higher up on that list.
Okay.
Hey, what about the safety expense, for your safety expense? What are you covering with that?
Um, it could be sometimes like if they, we buy like a, a safety book or a, you know, get a new harness, uh, for things like that.
P P E.
Yeah, P P Es.
Safety vests, hard hats.
Yeah, do you have any meetings for safety?
Have any.
Meetings.
Safety meetings.
Oh, absolutely, yes, so every Thursday, actually, we have a safety meeting over there and we watch a little video. Usually they're just YouTube videos, but we make sure it's documented and that actually comes for OSHA training. So every, every Thursday, we do that, do that, and then, um, a few times a year, we'll have a bigger training where I, we'll actually go out and we'll put on the harnesses and that kind of stuff and make sure everything still fits us, make sure that we didn't eat too much food in the previous years and we don't have to move a couple notches and stuff like that, so.
Do you, do you have any, uh, discuss any about working on the, on the roads and that? Putting out cones and stuff like that for safety?
Yeah, and especially whenever we do workout on the highway, we make sure that we follow MDOT standards, so we have to, uh, we do have a permit to workout there, but we have to do advanced notice and part of that, we have to follow what they want us to do.
Probably a lot safer on the highways than these side streets.
Even on the side streets, we try to pretty much, uh, do the same thing, we put a couple different sets of signs out, we have our, uh, safety, everybody's gotta have their safety vest on, um, they have to have their hard hats on, especially if we're doing gigs and of course we have our trucks with our lights and stuff going.
What brings you, which, for that question is, I seen on the corner, they're right on the corner and they're digging on this corner and they didn't have the cones out, they didn't have safety things as far as I was instructed to do. And this damn car come wheeling down there so damn fast, I just thought, oh, crazy, you know, somebody could get hurt.
By all means, if you ever see that, get a wall of me right away and I'll make sure that they have stuff up there.
Yeah.
They're supposed to.
Well, I just, I, I just wonder if you're instructed to do it.
They're supposed to, they're supposed to have the cones out and the safety and signs and, and their safety vests and stuff, huh?
A lot of companies, they say you have to do this, but.
Yeah. So, yeah, we, we, they're supposed to, and we'll, I'll double check to make sure.
I'd hate to see someone get hurt, so.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, that's our biggest goal, is to make sure everybody goes home alive.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if things get broke, that's one thing we don't wanna.
That's good, right?
Good goal.
Well, I have no more questions on the water fund, I think we're good there.
Uh, debt service, five seventy-four. I'm just, maybe, maybe I'm confused. The, I'm guessing the payments that we made, ten thousand dollars or whatever the payment is, the amount doesn't change, but the interest and principal would change. Typically, the principal payment is higher and then the interest is less. So, why would we go from two fifty-five to two sixty-five?
I think these were numbers, well, Kim's.
Principal, it comes from the amortization schedule. The principal payment increases as the interest payment decreases.
I know, that's what I just said.
So that's exactly what's happening.
The principal payment is the top number.
So I didn't add the two, I'm guessing everything it's.
Yeah, you'll see the interest decreases by five grand, the principal increases by ten.
Yeah.
It's probably twice a year is what I put on here too.
Hmm, looks like it's paid once a year.
Or just once a year.
Yeah, that's kind of what it looks like, cause there's no money taken out through June.
I feel like D W R F, those quarterly, I'm just wondering if they're not, uh, allocated properly as far as journal entries go.
Hmm, yeah, it looks like it's once a year, they're been, or, well, as you said, exactly as you said.
Cause there's an increase, and I'm just trying to figure out why, four thousand dollar increase. I mean, like, well, at each amount, you're saying there's a forty-four seventy-three increase.
So these come from the amortization schedules that Lois had put together before she left. They're probably as old as the debt, those amortization schedules. You should actually have it in the packet that you were handed today.
I think we got it, Lenny, but then the, I think I put mine on the very front. Right.
Water, we.
Did you find it?
Yeah, so the principal payment is increasing by five thousand each year for the remainder. And the, I'm guessing that two fifty-five number is probably actually two sixty, and it was just in there wrong?
Which facility are we looking at?
Water.
D W R F, it's the two point one-two-five percent interest rate.
Yes, okay.
It's the second from right column.
Right.
Looks like that's the debt retiring in twenty-twenty-five.
Yes.
While we're there, if you don't mind, on that sheet, there's two columns in here that we maybe should clean up this year. One is the Grove Street land, we have two payments left of fifty thousand plus totaling just over a hundred thousand. That's general fund, so maybe we don't want to do that until next year if we're paying off the solid waste loan, which we'll get to in a minute. But the wastewater fund has a fifty thousand dollar debt that could be paid off right now. And I'm, I'm suggesting that we pay that off at year end before we close the books.
When we get to this, I have a lot of other questions on this too, when we get to this one.
Well, we've got, so you take it out, out of the fund balance?
Right.
Yeah.
Not out of this budget.
Being a, being an enterprise fund, it's the reserve, I guess, but, yep. I'm still learning the definitions too.
But that's probably, the more you can get off your books, probably this year, the better. Although the interest rate's never gonna be that low again, is it?
Well, and that one is just an inter-fund loan as well, at one percent.
But it's just hanging out there, I mean, really, get rid of the, yeah, that's what the economists would tell you, get rid of those.
The auditors are telling us to do.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, get rid of the Grove Street one.
We may have to wait one more year on Grove Street if we pay off the solid waste loan.
Well, you said we have approximately, I think maybe it's a guess, eight months of fund balance?
If we paid off the hundred and sixty-five, and of course, that solid waste loan is not shown on here.
Oh.
Right.
Cause that was.
Eighty?
Yes.
There you go, yeah, I was thinking one sixty-five for some reason, but.
But that's what I'm saying, if we've got eight months.
We would have eight months of operating expenses left in the fund balance if we, if the general fund paid off its loan to the solid waste fund.
Okay.
And the recommendation is how many months?
So I say we do Grove Street too then?
So, it depends who you talk to.
Right.
I think the board had established policy of four months.
Right.
My recommendation is six months because that's the increment in which the revenues actually come in.
Right, and the, the big world recommends. We don't know.
Depends who you talk to.
Changes.
I mean, one auditor will say one, another will say another, um.
Does our auditor say? Oh, I brought that book.
Most like four, but I think six is more.
Well, six is more reasonable, they tell.
If we were in great financial shape, a year of operating revenue and fund balance would be ideal. Cause then you can really suffer through a really bad year, right? If for some reason your revenue just disappeared because nobody could pay their taxes.
There'll be a lot bigger problems than us.
Sounds like we've got enough that we could cover the hundred thousand for Grove Street.
But I don't think we should be holding that much of our taxpayers' money either, so.
I agree with Lynn, I say pay them off.
Well, the auditors recommended it, so we should do that.
That's why we pay them.
I'll have my two cents in.
Okay.
When you take, pay off the Grove Street, we had talked about this board before on the board, take those dollars and put them to another.
Say something else.
So that debt goes down faster.
The highest one.
So if you look at the public works facility versus a D W R F, you've got three more years on the D W R F. And at the end of, in twenty-twenty-six, you take the two seventy-five and plunk that over onto the public works facility. Figure out how quickly you're gonna be able to pay off that public works facility. Cause you're still gonna be paying the, the yearly one fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand, if you drop that two seventy-five over there, all of a sudden you're compressing out that timeframe down because you're paying three point one-five percent interest there. So if we can move it over there, you're gonna save money overall and that.
In interest.
In interest.
So. However, though, that's when the debt retirement stops, okay? So, we're, we are, we are thinking that if we do buy into the water treatment plant, that debt retirement will replace what's here, so, whatever that is. Yeah, so that's, so that's a good thought.
That's fine, I think, looking at what we have right now, and we move to that scenario, then you're gonna have to.
The next year.
Then we'll have to do something, that too, but just looking at this year, by flip, flipping that money over right now, you could decrease or depress the.
Well, if, if for some reason, yeah, for some reason we didn't do that, then yeah, you'd have an extra two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So you could pay off that loan in about three, three and a half years.
Whatever amounts to.
Faster than.
Cause I'm just looking at the interest on that, three point one, three percent interest on that.
If you take two hundred and seventy-five thousand and move it over, that, they're almost gone, it's almost gone. Two years and it'll be gone.
Yeah, well, we don't know what our investment's gonna be with the city if that happens to.
Or if we're even gonna choose to do that, yeah, that's a really big decision.
It's something to keep in the back of your mind on that too.
Correct, but today we are.
As of today.
Yeah, so we can keep going though, right?
We should have more numbers, I think, what is it, uh, end of this month, they're gonna have, you were gonna meet with the city?
Right, we should have, our, one study should be completed here within the next couple of weeks and I believe the other study should be shortly after that.
So based on those studies, Lenny, will you have kind of a general, what, what they, what they would, what the plant is worth?
Correct, yes.
And then what?
How much we would need.
Well, much we would need?
Yep.
So that'll base a lot of that, well, not this next year's budget, but probably the years after.
We're gonna be looking at probably five, five to ten percent of the capacity of the plant, right? We're at five percent of the capacity of the wastewater plant, but we're only looking at becoming the second owner of the water treatment plant if we go that route. at becoming the second owner of the water treatment plant if we go that route. It's not apples to apples because the water treatment plant has far greater capacity than it's operating at. So, we just need to determine what that percentage is. If we own five percent of the wastewater and ten percent of the water, it might equate to the same volume, water in, water out. It's just percentage of the capacity, so, because the capacities are different.
The other thing we have to remember is the, I think, um, interest rates are pushing seven percent now on mortgages. And, uh, the balloon is coming up next year. And I don't know that we'd have to pay seven. Depends on what, how we decide to fund, fund the buildings, but we're going to have a big, a big rollover, a couple million dollars we're going to have to finance.
Is that where we're talking, to go to RD, John, and see if we can get some money from RD?
Yeah, I just have to figure out who is handling facilities at RD now. I don't know if Jim Yoder is retired or not.
That's where you can get, what, like a twenty-year loan or thirty-year loan? The interest rate for them will probably be lower.
Lower than the bank.
Lower than the bank.
Should be.
The issue that, there, though, is I think we still have to go through the bond process, and so there's added costs upfront to do it.
It saves us that balloon, hopefully that balloon payment.
Unless they come up with a decent interest rate and we can just roll it over. It's hard to say.
Yep, who knows? Hey, they raised it pretty fast.
It's going to go up again.
Well, it'll probably go up multiple times yet on that.
That's going to hurt development.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, so we're moving on, right, Lynn?
So, that's good discussion.
So, we're on to.
Anything else on?
I got no other after anything for water.
I'm looking at the five seventy-eight and the five eighty, the general fund and the general services and the garage. When you look at it, you're just flip flopping about twenty-five hundred dollars between the two of them.
Say that again?
Where are you?
On five seventy-eight, there's a differential about twenty-five hundred, and then the five eighty in the garage is differential about twenty-five hundred. One goes up and one goes down. When you really look at it, it's kind of.
It's a wash.
Well, it's a wash between the two and that, too, so.
Oh, between the garage and general services?
General fund?
Yes, we, yeah, we lose a thousand. Yeah, gain a thousand, whatever. That's what Lynn.
Okay, tell us about solid waste, Lynn.
Okay, that one's an interesting one.
Going downhill.
I'll.
So, um, the way with the, with the landfill is basically tipping fees are going to go up two dollars every year. That's just kind of.
Two dollars a ton.
Per ton, yeah. So, that's just kind of baked in.
It's supposed to be six years, and I think there's two years left, but John was saying he thinks they'll just keep it.
Right, yeah, so.
Well, they're looking, they're under consent order from Eagle to deal with PFOS out there now.
Solid waste.
They, they did get grant loan funding from Eagle in this last round of funding requests, the same thing that we went after. They, they did get it. They got more points because of their consent order. So, it's not all going to be grant, meaning they're going to have to pay some of the money back. How do you do that? Tipping fees.
Sure fees.
So, even if the two, two dollar a ton tipping fee increases going, was supposed to expire in two years, it may actually increase more than two dollars a ton because of this new debt they have to take on, that they're required to take on, so.
So, I guess I can go and reverse back to the revenues. Um, so, if we were just to stay with what I have here, I would recommend an eighteen, I would recommend it going up, it would be like ninety cents.
Ninety cents.
Ninety cents, yeah, uh, to eighteen fifteen a month. One interesting thing is that right now, um, and I don't know where it came from, but our ordinance basically has a full-time and a part-time rate. Somehow, a long time ago, there was a, a reduced rate.
Right, for people who lived.
Yeah, and but it was one thing that I, it wasn't, it wasn't in the ordinance, so it's just, now we, so we have a full-time, part-time, and reduced rate. The reduced rate rate now is at seven dollars a month. So, one thing we would probably ask is to at least make it fifty percent of a, of a full-time rate.
Who's the reduced rate?
Well, I think if people, um, died and their houses were empty, families could ask for a reduced rate because there was no garbage.
Some people also ask for a reduced rate if they go, like, on vacation, but it has to be for more than three months, or if it, the house is up for sale, you know, realtor. But right now, it was, I think the seven dollars was when the garbage rates were fourteen dollars a month, so it was like half.
So, it should go up and, and be fifty percent of what that is.
Fifty percent of whatever the, the full-time rate is.
And that's fair. I think that's fair.
And that one is kind of hard because it vacillates back and forth, so it's not, the, the numbers could change every month of who's on a reduced rate. So, that does make it a little bit difficult to try to kind of get a handle. Um, as of when I had run the random numbers, there was thirty-two reduced, but now there might only be ten reduced, and then maybe.
Well, I would just say up that to the nine, nine dollars or nine, whatever you're going to charge.
So, that, that would be if it stayed like, like, uh, everything is, and then, of course, on the expenditure side would be the tipping fees, and also there is a COLA built into our garbage hauler contract. So, um, they also do have a, they could add a fuel surcharge on in the beginning of the year, too, so. I'm kind of looking at worst-case scenario on everything on that, and that's where I built the revenues on there. Um, so, I, I put like a six percent COLA for twenty twenty-three in there. Uh, with the first Wednesday rubbish drop-off, that actually, I, I don't know if you've heard anything about that. We, you know, we did have a few people who were concerned about it, but for all and all, for the most part, it seems like that went pretty well. So, we were able to kind of control, uh, the first Wednesday, uh, seemed like everybody had a turn, though, that wanted to, to bring, uh, the rubbish there, so we didn't have too many issues with that. So, we were able to significantly curtail that cost because the year before was a big hit.
Do we, do we meet our goal? We met our goal of reducing that cost.
Correct, yes, yep. So, I would, I actually went, I kept that at twelve thousand. I went, I think I had twenty-four thousand, but because we weren't really sure what we were going to do at first for twenty twenty-two, but for twenty twenty-three, um, I'm keeping it at, uh, five per month for seven months, and that would be twelve thousand two hundred and fifty. And it's, there was a couple of times that we hit five, but it, I think that only happened like maybe two or three times we actually hit it. And then with the recycling, we're, we want to keep the recycling the same, keeping the glass recycling out there, or they could bring it right directly to the landfill. But, is there maybe one you want to get into about the, uh, with the landfill closure?
Yes. So, there is a landfill closure fund. It's basically the fund balance and solid waste, and the cap had previously been established at a four hundred thousand, I believe, of which the general fund has borrowed a hundred and fifty-eight thousand and some change, okay? We intend for the general fund to pay that off this year. In talking to the landfill, we do not need to keep our own landfill closure fund because they have their own that's reviewed.
Did they admit that?
Yes.
Yeah.
They finally, they finally admitted that?
That's five dollars.
Well, I don't know how closely it's been asked before. They, their landfill closure fund gets reviewed every five years when their annual, or when their permit gets reviewed, to make sure that it's funded adequately. And if it's not funded adequately, they have to set more aside every year to catch back up. The only reason we would need a landfill closure fund is if we had a landfill that we owned that needs to be monitored for thirty years that's already been closed. I'm not aware of the township owning a closed landfill. The city of Marquette has one down off of Pioneer. Ishbaming, Nagani, and Nagani Townships share one off of Malton Road. Uh, those are the two that I know of that are publicly-owned closed landfills within the vicinity. I don't know that the township has any ownership in the closed city landfill because they don't ask us to cover any annual maintenance costs of the mowing out there. I'm thinking township residents were able to haul their garbage there, probably at a different rate than city residents before the county landfill opened. We do not need a landfill closure fund, so we can start drawing that down, pay it off first, the debt from the general fund, so that you have your full four hundred thousand, plus or minus, whatever it ends up being. Then, to keep rates stable for a few years, you can draw it down to a number that's an appropriate fund balance. I'm thinking a hundred thousand is probably closer than four hundred thousand. That would take us five years at stabilized rates with two dollars a ton annual increase and, uh, COLA of five to six percent on average.
Makes sense to me.
So, the garbage rates could stay flat for five years. Knowing that we have to review it every year and make sure the costs aren't escalating more than we currently estimate them.
So, we would just say it's going to be flat for this year pending next year after review. Yeah, I wouldn't tell people because I can tell you.
I would say, no rate increase.
Well, and I, I guess I.
But we review them every year, so.
Yeah, yeah.
At our current projections, it would be five years, but we have to verify those projections on an annual basis to make sure we're not under or significantly over projecting.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't know what, what party's going to come up with.
Yeah, I would just say, well, hold it stable this year.
That's perfectly fine. I'm comfortable with that.
That's what people like to hear, there's no rate increase.
Due to, due to, I think we need to say, due to the management of some things. I, I mean, I, I think we need to say that you, as residents, worked hard to not do this, and we, as the township, worked hard to get you to not do this, or however.
There were definitely some significant cost savings that's at, at their expense, for sure.
Well, we need to tell people. My, my husband was whining about it in the beginning. He didn't even go there all year. So, do you know?
Save your garbage for all year?
We don't have any garbage. I didn't even put any out last week. I, I think people need to somewhat, yeah, know that, too, because, you know, yeah, I, I just do.
Well, you know.
You're, you're helping everyone, your neighbors, by conserving on garbage, or whatever you want to call it. Pete, you say it all the time.
Well, if you look around the communities around us, you can't look at too many that aren't raising something. So, we didn't raise anything last year, and if we project not raising it this year, that's a great, great accomplishment by this board and the management in this time.
A good place to live.
Especially with eight percent inflation as we speak.
Well, we're talking about a ninety cent increase in garbage, right?
Well, no, it's going to be flat.
We're going to use what's there to offset the cost.
We can, we'll offset that ninety cent a month.
For a year.
Increase with a drawdown of the landfill closure fund, knowing that we don't need to maintain that anymore. That being said, you don't want to draw it down to zero because now you're in the opposite predicament, right?
I'm trying to visualize where the, where that closure fund is in the budget, and I can't really see it.
It's in the fund balance.
Just in the fund balance.
Correct.
Yeah, you'd have to look at the financials.
Financial statements.
Financial statements, and that, so that's getting back to you keeping a hundred thousand balance there.
So.
I would be more satisfied if you're talking a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand because of the unknowns. We just don't know what the future's going to be at this point in time.
Well, we'd look at it next year anyways. It's just this year we're saying there's no.
Well, who knows, too, that if we keep it stable and we, and the, the fund stays stable, you don't, you just don't know.
And if people recycle more and there's less tonnage going to the landfill, there's not as big a cost. I mean, that's what they need to know, that that's how that works.
True, but if there's nothing going across the scale, how do they pay to operate?
Well, we don't care about what the city does.
Yes, we do.
We care about how we save our money.
If, if the landfill doesn't have revenue, they increase their tipping fees even more.
That's how it goes. That's what we do with water and sewage.
I know, I'm just trying to address the reality here.
So, so when the COLA increases based on increased gas prices, when gas prices decrease, do they get, reduce it?
The COLA, there is a COLA and a fuel surcharge.
Okay, so the fuel surcharge, then?
Right.
Does that decrease?
No.
It has, no, it has.
It's based on a minimum fuel price.
Well, you know, we need to make sure that contract says that because.
It's based on a minimum fuel price. That's clear to everybody that bid on it.
Oh, okay.
So, the COLA, the COLA, though, by far, is that's just tracking the inflation rate, so that's what's hitting us right now.
Well, sure, because there's. So, the other question is, um, I, I think the recycle cans that empty into their can without touching, how do we get garbage ones that empty into their can without touching?
We would probably have to buy.
Well, you know, maybe that's something to look at because from their perspective, it's a safety issue. From our perspective, it's less of putting stuff into the landfill. Fill the plastic bags, go, you know, people.
It just, there would be a significant cost to it, right?
But, but could employees, could employees, could, um, residents personally buy those?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Wait, uh, not wait, man. North Country actually had a limited supply. If anyone is interested in buying one, they can reach out to them directly, but their supply comes and goes. They keep them because of other contracts they have.
Well, that's, again, something good to know as a resident.
Yeah, we can definitely check on it.
In Florida, um, that's how it works. That's, they have two cans, one color is one, one color is the other.
I know the city of Marquette has a lot of, of empty, green ones or yellow ones now.
People return?
I mean, tons of them.
Oh, right.
They switched.
I wonder if they'd sell them?
I don't know. I, I think it was part of their contract, whatever waste management's going to take them, so.
Well, maybe waste management, so. Anyways, just an idea.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we, we can, we can check on it, just, but it's one thing, like, if the township were to buy them, it would be.
So, there's, there is another issue to that, and that's that the trucks that pick up the waste in recycling in Marquette are, they're, they're completely different trucks than what our contractor has currently. So, if we went that way across the whole township, they would need several years of guaranteed contract to offset the cost of replacing their fleet to service us, right? Or customizing it.
Be a contract.
And we can't guarantee that past our current contract.
But something to look at for the future.
At some point, we're going to have to bid it out again, and very likely, it won't end up in our favor, but that's just how history writes itself.
Yeah, well.
I think the other thing is.
We all like raises, don't we?
On the recyclables. If you all remember, we were supposed to get a refund on the recyclables and that. You to get yours?
For who?
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. I've got a question for about twenty minutes. Back when we were talking about, um, the, the three months, or the three times you can bring stuff to the, to the dump. I had a neighbor that asked me, is there any other place other than the dump on four eighty to take ru, not rubbish, but leaves and brush and things like that after ours closed?
Yeah, you can actually bring, you can bring them directly to the landfill.
That's the only place, though, right?
Unless a surrounding community takes them for free, um, but other than that, I think, I'm not sure, North Country might take it, but they might charge, they might charge you for it.
Fifty dollars minimum.
Yeah.
And if we bring it to the landfill, who pays for that?
I think, I think it's just covered. I think they take it.
They just, I mean, I know they, they take your address. They want to know where you're living and stuff, but there's, the township doesn't have to pay for that, then?
I don't believe we do, but I'll double-check on that.
Okay, okay, because it's not that inconvenient to have to take leaves and brush and stuff out there. It really is not. It's easy. I've done it many times, and that was a question my neighbor had. Is there any other place? And if that is the only place, then, you know, who's paying for it?
Yeah, I, I believe that we do not get charged for that. I'm not, I'll have to double-check that, but I believe they take it. And they do, they do also take the glass out there, too, so if you can't make it for the first Wednesday glass, uh, drop-off up there, you can bring it out there as well.
And by the way, it's twelve miles to go this way, and it's twelve miles to go up the other way, so. Just so you know that, if you have to go out there.
But we do have our leaf drop-off. We'll be starting here, um, I think, next week.
It's like eight, eight eights or something.
Yeah.
And that's going to be where?
At North Country disposal.
How long is that in the last?
The last and the end of the month.
It's on your calendar.
Yeah, it's on the back of the calendar, or on the calendar.
Yep.
So, everybody, I'll turn my phone on for a second, just so we can find out what it is. It's either a car accident or a fire.
Yeah.
I think we kind of, I.
We did.
Oh, David's.
I can't think of the right word to say.
What else, Lynn? I mean, we're, solid waste is going to be about the same, but no rate What else, Lynn? I mean, we're, solid waste is going to be about the same, but no rate increase, you know?
Yep.
So it is, so what's next?
I'm the agenda. Good with you then.
Okay, thank you.
You can stay. You're welcome.
Of course, if anybody else has any other questions, feel free to get ahold of me, and I'll see what I can do to answer your questions and.
Now, we'll want to redo this rate history, so it doesn't get out and looks like it's ninety cent increasing. We want to make sure.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
It was greatly presented.
Can you believe it? Gang, seventy minutes on Public Works. I'm curious if we've been trying to do that. Thanks, Lenny.
Yes.
And John, and John.
Fire or general?
Doesn't have to, no, we're, fire, we're going to do a different day. Let's go back to general.
Can I, can I request to be excused? I have shingles on the ground at home.
Oh, I thought you may have shingles.
We need to catch this before I have water damage.
Hall roofer.
Why don't we just wrap it up, Lynn? We're going to schedule, why don't we just wrap it up?
I, I apologize.
It's time, anyway. It's ten after four. We can get out of here.
Well, we said three to five, but that's okay.
No, I didn't put no time on there.
Oh, didn't you?
So, there's no time permits.
That's what I wrote in my book. Okay, that's fine.
So no public comment, and you got to adjourn the meeting.
We're adjourned for twelve.
Wow.
I can't believe that.
Thank you.